Call to order. The regular council meeting, 3:00 PM Tuesday, November the first, 2022. The call to order invocation by Jeff Dorby, pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Dunn Williams. Please stand. Holy Father, we thank you for another day that you allowed us to see. We thank you, Lord, for rest on last night. We thank you, Father, for those who are here today and present. Lord, we ask your special attention to Ms. Peters. Lord, today, we ask that you will comfort her and comfort her family. Father, we ask that you be with them in this hour and in hours to come. Father, we pray for others who are hurting, others who are sad. Father, we pray that you give us direction to do the things that's beneficial to those we serve. In the name of Christ, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please face the flag, repeat the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Hammond?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Maggio?
Here.
Counsel, in accordance with Louisiana Open Meetings Law and adopted Bossier City Council Meeting Rules Resolution, the City Council asks for order and decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda item may approach and state their name and address for the record and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on the particular item. That's up for discussion with up to four speakers per side. All other audience members are asked to please observe the meeting quietly. And if there is a need for audience members to hold a conversation or take a phone call, you are asked to please step out of the meeting. City Council appointed sergeant-at-arms have been instructed to maintain decorum and ask anyone in violation to step out of the meeting in order to maintain orderly conduct of the meeting.
We ask approval of the minutes of October the eighteenth, 2022. Regular council meeting in suspense with the reading.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Anyone would like to speak on this item before we vote? Please catch your vote, counsel.
Motion carries.
Counsel, I have a request from the engineering department and from purchasing to delete item number two under bids, the turn lane, Innovation Drive turn lane. They want to continue that to November fifteenth.
Make the motion. Second.
To delete or continue?
To continue, I'm sorry, to continue to November fifteenth.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to continue item two. Any comments? Counsel, please catch your vote.
I'd like to make a motion on, under new business number twenty-four, delete.
Mr. Montgomery, did you vote on that last item?
I did.
Motion carries. Okay, so you want to delete new business number twenty-four?
Yeah, I don't have enough, I'm pretty sure that's it.
Yes, sir.
Second.
Okay. Any comments, counsel? Anyone would like to speak on this item number twenty-four? Recommendation for deletion. Counsel, please catch your vote. Any other?
Motion carries.
Changes?
Is that it?
I was asking.
There, there was a discussion about the Viva Drive shed road. Did y'all want to do anything with that or?
Y'all like to make a motion, we continue that for thirty days to December the sixth.
What item is that?
That's new business number nine. Continue it to December sixth?
I think we need to do some more investigation or some talking to people.
Okay. Counsel, any comment on that recommendation to continue? Anyone like to comment on that? Item number nine to continue. Counsel, please catch your vote. Yeah.
Motion carries.
Phyllis, do I need to offer the change on the calendar or wait till we?
Wait till you get to that.
Okay.
That one. And so now, if there's no other changes, it would be to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Comment from anyone? Please catch your vote, counsel.
Motion carries. It don't have anything under ceremony matters or recognition of guest.
I don't think so.
Bids, witness opening and seal bids for bid number twenty-two dash sixty-eight, seventeen oh three Caney Lake Drive demolition.
Okay, good afternoon, counsel. Mayor Chandler.
Hello.
The first bid we're going to be opening today is for the demolition of seventeen oh three Caney Lake Drive that passed administrative council for demolition on September thirteenth. We have one bid today from Abatement Services. They do have their bid bond. The total for the bid is twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty dollars. That's twenty-seven, three, four, zero, point, zero, zero.
Make a motion to accept the bid.
So moved. Second.
The second bid is for twenty-six eighteen Barber Street, which, I'm sorry, you need to.
You got to vote on that one.
Counsel, please catch your vote on that item.
Motion carries.
Now, we can open the bid for twenty-six eighteen Barber Street. That also passed for administrative, passed administrative council for demolition on September thirteenth. And Abatement Services is the single bidder for that one today. They also have their bid bond on that, that one. The total amount for this bid is twenty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars. That's two-five, two-two, zero, point, zero, zero. I ask that you approve the reading of the bid.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the bid for item three. Counsel, do you have any discussion? Please catch your vote.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Hey, Brooke, I meant to tell you, thank you for your comments earlier.
Public hearings, actions on unfinished business. Adopt an ordinance to appropriate ten thousand dollars from Fund Four Ten Parkway Capital Projects Fund to purchase time clocks, final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Counsel, we have a motion, Mr. Montgomery, second, Mr. Smith on this item. End of discussion. And the floor is open for public comment. Counsel, please catch your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to adopt the general fund budget for twenty twenty-three, final reading.
Do we want to combine these?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion, we combine. Ordinance is number two through twenty-five unless anyone has a question about any of the, the budget items there on each ordinance.
Second your motion.
Okay. Motion to combine two through twenty-five on the agenda. Motion by Mr. Montgomery, second, uh, motion by Mr. Williams, second by Mr. Montgomery. End of discussion. And the floor is open for comments. Counsel, please catch your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt the operating and capital budgets for twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Montgomery, second, Mr. Smith. End of discussion on this item. And the floor is open for comments. Discussion vote, counsel. Okay. Yes, sir. Okay. Counsel, hold your vote. Just give us your name and address, please, sir.
David Crockett, six five three Domain Drive, North Bossier City. I don't live in Bossier City. I do want to comment, though. I, I haven't seen anything published, and I think that probably the twenty twenty-one state accounting review of the Bossier budget is probably out, and I'm going to go review it. But I haven't seen anybody talk about or raise, you know, whether the bonds have been funded. You know, what's the total debt for Bossier City? I find it interesting that we're funding all these budget items without going through and talking to the public about the total debt per capita and the things that are affecting Bossier City. Now, I've been a little bit criticized by one of the gentlemen at the table, you know, for being involved because I don't live in Bossier City and don't vote here. But I pay my taxes here, I do all my shopping in Bossier City, and I will not go anywhere else unless I have to go somewhere else, and I pay my water here. And I do wish that there was more discussion on these things, a little bit more public information. I've been asking for that for two years since I've been here. I find it interesting when some of the councilmen try to save money in the council meetings that they'll get shot down, shouted down.
Sir, as a point of order, Mr. Darby. As a point of order, Mr. Darby.
I want to bring to your attention.
I'm addressing this to you, Mr. President, that I wish there was more public debate. And when somebody has a criticism or tries to.
This is the point we want to make, point of order. If you're going to talk about the item.
Right.
That's germane.
Okay, well, I, I would like to see more public discussion, and I think that is, is germane. I think the total debt per capita, the total debt per household from Bossier City to fund all these things ought to be more of a public discussion. I don't find it in the paper, I don't find it in the council meetings. I can't believe that we don't.
Again, Mr. Darby, I will ask that the man is not speaking to the agenda item.
Let, let me ask you, Mr. President. Is the total debt related to the budget items? The amount of, that we're spending? So see, what happens is that, that you find that someone shouts down people because they raise fiscally conservative issues, which is what the budget is. I have been shouted down about that once before, and, and.
Sure.
And I think you're very gracious. But my point, and I'm not going to drag this on and on, but I think more information needs to be out for the public. I think change orders, things that are in this budget are costing the city a lot of money. And if we don't do good estimates and things, it hurts Bossier City, so I appreciate it.
One thing I'm going to say is that we've had workshops, and I don't think you were present, but we've had them prior to this, more than one. So if you were going to address the budget and the items on the budget, that would have been the time to do that. And you could have asked anything you wanted to ask. We have a director of finance available to any person, any taxpayer. So at this point, your concerns may be valid, but it's a little bit too late because the fact that we've opened the door for public input many times before we got to this point.
Yeah, well, let me just say, Mr. President, I find it very interesting that you can watch city council after city council, but you don't see councilmen trying to shut people down from their three minutes that I have a right in your charter to make comments.
Yes, sir, I, I appreciate your feedback on that. And we try to do the best we can showing every person the same respect that they deserve.
Frankly, Mr. President, I don't really see that.
Yeah.
And I don't even see it on the council. After a couple of meetings ago, I don't see it on the council.
We strive to do that, but sometimes people have passionate issues and the issues become at that podium, at this podium, passionate. And that happens sometimes. It's a personality thing, it's, it's the way we're built. But we're not doing anything egregious to anybody. We, we try to avoid that.
Well, I, I believe that, that a general comment, it does not have. You just combined how many, thirty, forty items? I don't know how many it is, and you say, well, let's talk about it all in general. But if I mention something about a budget that it's not relative to what you're spending, and a councilman tries to shut me down, Mr. President, it's your job to defend me as a public speaker.
No one tried to impede your comment.
Right.
You have to make it germane to that item.
Right. Well, my personal last comment is that until we have term limits in this council, we're going to have people shouted down.
I cannot believe we're allowing this man to sit here and now talk about.
Now, now you're talking about something totally different now. So I will, I appreciate your coming forward.
Okay.
You're going to have to move on to the next item.
Thanks a lot, I appreciate it.
Okay. All right.
Phyllis, for the record, Mr. Darby, I'd like to ask the clerk, would you please publish at some point, and anyone that is welcome to come to the council chambers, and see how long this budget's been worked on and how many times it's been presented and the entire time schedule of the process that we went through? Because obviously, some people are not aware of the amount of effort and work that went into this budget. And irrelevant terms that are being thrown out there because someone writes articles and so forth that have nothing, absolutely zero, to do with our budget process. So it, it's terms actually that I've never heard before. And I actually went to school and became a certified public accountant. And, and, in, in these terms that are being thrown around absolutely are ridiculous, for lack of a better term. And, you know, that's my take on it. But I would like for everyone, for public record, to know the timeline, when it was published, the amount of work that went into this budget. And I want to thank everybody on this council because I know each of you, the mayor, Angela, Ms. Williamson, everyone that was involved in this process, thank you.
Mr. President, if I might add, Ms. McGraw has published the budget according to law. She has, she has published it in the public journal. We have had multiple public hearings concerning the budget. This, we've had a first reading and now a second reading. And we have absolutely, the city has fulfilled every single requirement that is required to pass a valid budget.
And also, we've had budget meetings and talked to each department head about their budget in this, in this, in the entire budget. So I agree, we've, we've done our due diligence.
We started, our first budget workshop that we had was September the sixth, and it was advertised, I believe, about five or six days prior to that meeting as well.
So that being said, we've established that we do do our due diligence to make sure that the public is aware of what we do regarding the city budget. So I appreciate everybody coming. Where are we now?
I had, adopt the ordinance to adopt the operating and capital. It's Mr. Montgomery and Mr. Smith. You opened it up for public comments.
So that's item twenty-six or twenty-five?
Crockett was the only public comment.
Okay. All right, did we get a, a motion and a second?
Yes, sir.
And we got to comment. Counsel, please catch your vote on this.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to amend the twenty twenty-two waters and sewer fund budgets.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Montgomery, second. Mr. Smith, end of discussion. The floor is open for comments. Counsel, please catch your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to replace the water service to two-two-one Traffic Street due to a dead-end water main causing water quality concerns at a cost of thirteen thousand dollars to come from the Water Capital Contingency Fund, final reading.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. End of discussion, counsel? I think the motion, Mr. Montgomery, second, Mr. Hammond's? Okay. And the floor is open for comments. Catch your vote, counsel.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to amend the twenty twenty-two alternative fuel stations fund budget, final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Montgomery, second, Mr. Smith. End of discussion. The floor is open for comments. Counsel, counsel, catch your vote.
Mr. President, I had a question. Charles, where are we on analyzing, you know, whether we want to continue? Or are we having to appraise the fuel stations?
Uh, we're in the process of having them appraised by David Volantine. We're also in the, in the process of, we're going to have to correct a, a legal description in one of the stations, and we're, we're almost done with that.
Okay.
Motion carried on that, that previous question.
Okay. Next item.
Adopt an ordinance appropriating one million, two hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars from the American Rescue Plan Act grant for a one-time premium pay allowance of two thousand dollars to eligible full-time employees of the city of Bossier City, final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, Mr. Montgomery, second, Mr. Maggio. And, um, any counsel would like to speak on this item before we?
When will the checks go out, Phyllis?
There's been questions from employees about that. I don't know the answers to that question. I didn't know y'all knew that.
Thirty days after, or?
It's when the ordinance becomes final. It has to be published in the official journal, and then we have the ten-day veto period. It has to survive that by the mayor. I've had no indication from the mayor that it will be vetoed, so we're looking at December ninth.
So that it'll go out before Christmas?
Yes, sir, that's, that's the target date.
That was the goal, so, thank you all.
And the chair would like to acknowledge some of the emails and personal comments regarding the council and the mayor administration going forward with this one-time incentive. People don't always say thank you, but we, we did get some, some, some emails and, and some people made face-to-face contact thanking us for what we do as we try to thank you for what you do. So we, we appreciate those who were so gracious to, to give those, give us those feedbacks. And we again thank Mr. Montgomery and the administration who brokered this incentive. I guess we can call it an incentive, thirteenth check?
Premium.
One-time premium pay.
One-time check, yes. Christmas check. And did we get, yeah, we got a motion and a second.
Yes, sir.
And did I ask for comments from anyone? Please catch your vote, counsel.
Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Adopt an ordinance to declare that an emergency did exist in the city of Bossier City which affected property, public health, and safety due to the requirement to restore a twelve-inch water main blowout along Airline Drive at a cost of four thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fourteen cents to come from Water Capital Contingency Funds, final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Williams, second, Mr. Montgomery, discussion, counsel? And the floor is open for someone to comment? Please catch your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to declare that an emergency did exist in the city of Bossier City which affected property, public health, and safety due to the requirement to restore a twenty-four-inch sewer force main blowout near Viking Drive at a cost of twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars and fourteen cents to come from the Sewer Capital Contingency Funds, first and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Free, and second, Mr. Maggio?
Yes.
All right.
All right, I'll lay off for a while.
I guess, yeah, I guess Mr. Montgomery's a close second as well. Any discussion on this item? And the floor is open for comments. Please catch your vote.
Everyone seems motivated now, so.
Motion carries.
All right.
Adopt a zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC. Petitioner Jeremy Nicely, Sealy Real Estate Services. Location twenty-three point nine acres, more or less, located in sections ten and eleven, township nineteen north, range thirteen west, Bossier Parish in Bossier City, Louisiana. Request a zoning amendment from RA Residential Agricultural to RMD Residential Medium Density.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Williams made the motion and seconded by Mr. Free. Discussion? And the floor is open for comments. Discussion vote, counsel?
Motion carries. Adopt a zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC. Petitioner James Cummings, location twenty-seven oh nine Old Menden Road, Bossier City, Louisiana. Request a zoning amendment from RLD Residential Low Density to B-one Business Office for commercial marketing and sale purposes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. I'm James Cummings on the property at twenty-seven oh nine Old Menden Road. We have gone through the MPC, there hasn't been no opposition to the zoning change, and I'm here to get your graces on the final.
What's your address for the record, please, sir? Address for the record?
Twenty-seven oh nine Old Menden Road.
Any discussion, council members?
It will seem a long time coming, I know that.
Property's been in my family eighty-one years.
Wow.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Cummings.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We had a motion, Mr. Williams, second, Mr. Maggio, I believe? Okay. Any person would like to speak on this item? Please catch your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC. Petitioner Stacy Gray, Coil Engineering, location. Location point six-six-one acres, more or less. Request a zoning amendment from RLD Residential Low Density to B-three General Business for proposed trades multi-tenant building.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Free, seconded by Mr. Smith. Discussion. And comments. Please cast your vote, counsel.
Motion carries. Adopt a zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC. Petitioner Zhu Zing Mighty Crab. Location twenty-nine fifty-eight East Texas Street, Bossier City, Louisiana. Request conditional use approval for the sale of high and low-content alcohol for on-premise consumption at a restaurant.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Uh, Williams and a seconded by Mr. Hammond's. And discussion. And comments. Please cast your vote, counsel.
Motion carries. Adopt a zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC. Petitioner Brendan Lee, Four Wheel Solutions. Location thirty-eight sixty-eight Industrial Circle, Bossier City, Louisiana. Request conditional use approval for the temporary storage of wrecked or salvaged vehicles.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith and a second, Mr. Williams. Any discussion?
Uh, yeah, Mr. President, how can, um, temporary storage? How long is it gonna be fenced in? Um...
Captain, please give your name and address.
Uh, Brendan Lee with Four Wheel Solutions, uh, eighteen twenty-five Airline Drive. Uh, temporary means that we're gonna tow these cars in. They're only gonna be in our possession until they're claimed by the owner, the insurance company, or we can file for a permit to sell to get rid of it. So, um, it's not gonna be a salvage yard or, you know, pick apart.
That was gonna be my next question.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're staying way away from that. So, we're gonna have them for max ninety days.
So, basically, y'all are getting the vehicles from towing companies and stuff like that?
Well, no, we're, we are a towing company.
Oh, you are a towing company, too?
Yeah, we'll tow them in, um, and then once they're, they're gonna be claimed, like I say, either by the owner, insurance company, uh, lien holder. And then if they're not, then we'll...
Basically, we're cooping your money from...
Exactly, yeah, yeah. We're not gonna sit on them any longer than we have to. And as far as fencing goes, whatever, I think the requirement's eight feet, I think. So, yeah, whatever needs to be done as far as that goes.
All right, thank you.
Carlotta, if, in fact, the, let's just say that this doesn't go as planned, is this revocable?
It could be, um, but the, the intent is for it to be temporary. Um, it's not supposed to be a salvage yard, so if it turns into that, then yes, it would be out of compliance at that point.
All right, thank you.
I understand that.
Thank you.
I would like to say that, uh, you guys are not gonna have a problem out of us. We're not a, you know, stereotypical towing company, um, you know, so the...
Yeah.
Thing we had, the thing we had going on on Shed Road that I'm sure everybody's familiar with won't happen on Industrial Circle, so, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Um, we had a motion, Mr. Smith, and second, Mr. Williams, I think.
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
Anyone else would like to speak on this item? Counsel, cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance approving an amendment to the Unified Development Code, Temporary Use Regulations, Fireworks Sale, Article six point seven point five. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
So I would like, uh, motion, acknowledge of Mr. Williams and second, Mr. Free, but I would like for Ms. Brown to just give a thumbnail, um, sketch of what this does. Not that I didn't wanna read it myself, but...
Only twenty pages. Um, Carlotta with the Bossier MPC. So, we found a discrepancy in the UDC versus what's actually in the city code, and it was causing confusion with the discharging of fireworks during fireworks sales season. So, what we're doing is just mirroring what's in the city ordinance with regards to discharge states for fireworks.
Okay.
So, it was a discrepancy and it was causing lots of confusion, so we would just wanna make sure we're in line with what the city ordinance requires.
Okay. Were the times the same, or they...
Our times were off a little bit, but we need...
I'll fix that, too.
Correct, we fixed that.
Okay, great, all right. Anyone else would like to ask Mrs. Brown anything? Okay, thank you, Mrs. Brown.
Yes, sir.
And the floor is open for comments. Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. And counsel, this item won't come back up until the November twenty-ninth meeting because there's advertising requirements for UDC code stuff. Introduce an ordinance allocating sixty-five thousand dollars for construction of a new sanitary sewer force main along V, oh, that one got deleted.
Enough's gone, yeah, continue.
We continue, did we?
Continue.
Introduce an ordinance to allocate a hundred and eight thousand, five hundred seventy-two dollars and thirty-one cents from the LDEQ loan, CS twenty-two eleven oh three dash zero two, and seven thousand, eight hundred twenty-nine dollars and eighty-four cents from Sewer Capital and Contingency Fund for the completion of the Shady Grove and Rome Street Lift Stations project and closeout of the LDEQ loan, CS twenty-two eleven oh three dash oh two, including change order number one, in the amount of thirty-two thousand, three dollars and ninety cents. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Smith, second, Mr. Maggio. Discussion.
Yeah, I got, um, Mr. Rochenbach. Is this, um, down there, is this fixing most of the problems? I mean, now that...
Yeah, so, it's, it's a complicated ordinance, and I get that. There, that, this was a large, uh, comprehensive program that DEQ was funding for Bossier City via their loan program.
Yeah.
So, we're at the tail of the tape. The Shady Grove Street Lift Station was completely rehabilitated, as was the Rome, uh, Street Pump Station. Both of those were, um, brought up to current standards. And there wasn't enough money in that loan to complete that, but it's, you know, it's hard to come to the exact penny on, on a exact penny loan. So, this completes that. The change order worked for some items that we wanted to add to that lift station, specifically Shady Grove. Um, we use a lot of ductile iron pipe, and we wanted to have that pipe internally lined. So, that's what that was for, just to make it last longer. So, both of those stations are in very good...
Good, thank you for doing that, 'cause I know it's been, I mean, it's been a nightmare down there. I know for, for you, for Mr. Williams, for me, um, uh, it's been a very long project.
Tough to get complete in the current state of trying to get bits and pieces and buy American requirements and things like that, but we're happy to see those done, so...
Awesome, thank you so much.
Thank you, yeah. Any other questions?
I got one, but it's not about this, so I'll wait till the end.
Okay, anyone else would like to comment? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to approve the sale of a Falcon hotbox trailer to the Bossier Parish Police Jury for fifty-four thousand dollars. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, Mr. Free, and a second. Uh, Mr. Smith?
Mr. Darby, what is a Falcon hotbox?
So we need someone to, to answer that for us.
Oh, I know, I've talked to Wade, okay. I'm, I've been gone for a while, so...
Is it a food trailer?
Could be.
Oh, it's a hot mix trailer. It's a insulated box with a tack system and never been used since it, since Public Works took possession of it. Take this money and put it back in our capital fund and use something that we're more apt to use on a regular basis.
What, what's the difference in designated this being a for-sale item versus surplus? Is there a difference?
It's, it's basically the same. It's just the fact that we found that the parish, the parish has a crew that will go out maybe an hour from an asphalt plant to do an asphalt repair, where that, those guys, that's what they do all around the parish, both ends of the parish, whereas we're never more than about three miles from the plant, so we just haul the, the hot mix in a, in a dump truck. This, this thing requires, at the end of the day, flushing the, the tack lines, uh, cleaning out the box, so it, on the front and backside, requires a lot of maintenance. Where, in most cases, we could've had our work done and be on to something else.
Hot mix, and once it dries, it's tough to get cleaned out.
And, uh, tack set up hard inside of hydraulic, or rubber hoses, uh, as to be, the hose has to be taken off and replaced. And save a lot of maintenance expense.
How, how did you come with that number, fifty-four thousand?
Well, we, we transacted for the, for the trailer for fifty-four thousand, five hundred. And that's the only amount I've had anybody interested in buying the, and, and... You know, other than putting it in surplus and putting it into the sale and then get whatever the, the auction would bring for it. They had a need for it, and we reached agreement on that amount of money.
Okay, so there is a difference in sale and surplus, 'cause we put in surplus, it's auction.
Might bring three thousand dollars. They, they, they have a need for that piece of equipment. And, and a new one at this point would be considerably more to buy, if you could even get one. So, that we were, I thought we were fortunate to find something to do with it.
Okay, any, thank you, sir. Anyone else? All right, we had a motion, uh, made by Mr. Free, second, Mr. Smith. And anyone else would like to comment? Okay, thank you, Mr. Free. Please cast your vote, counsel.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to approve report of change order number five and number seven for the LTRI, Louisiana Technology Research Institute, Bossier. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Free and a seconded by Mr., uh...
Please.
Williams, yeah. Uh, debate, discussion? And the floor is open for comments. Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to approve report of change order number one for the twenty-twenty-one Citywide Striping Project. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Smith, second, Mr. Hammond's. Discussion. And the floor is open for comments.
They, they gonna be able to get the material?
Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute the attached joint cooperative endeavor agreement between the City of Bossier City and Bossier Parish School Board for the cost-sharing of traffic control officers at schools within Bossier City. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, motion, Mr. Montgomery, second, Mr. Maggio. Discussion, counsel. We, um, we got contract in hand, Mr. Attorney?
Sir.
Do we have a contract?
Yes, we do. There is a contract in place that should be attached to the ordinance, and it is between the city and the school board, so...
Took a long time for a one-paced contract, didn't it?
There were some, there, there were some...
I had to, David, I'm sorry.
Well, there, there, there were three entities originally involved, and depending on, um... The money aspects and who's paying who and forced overtime versus who's gonna be responsible for retirement. So, I think between the city, the sheriff, and the school board, that we have gotten the, uh, most cost-effective agreement possible between the entities involved.
See, good things take time, bubba.
And the, the agreement is for a, a school year?
Yes, sir. It, it's for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year. It involves two intersections. The schools involved at those intersections are out, actually outside the city limits or the corporate limits of Bossier, but the roads requiring traffic control are inside the city limits. This way, um, traffic control will be provided. The only other way that the city could've provided it would basically be forced overtime by the Bossier City Police Department, and the city would have to bear, um, retirement cost and things of that nature associated with the payment of that, you know, of, of that extra forced overtime.
Okay. So, the twenty-five thousand, um, if, have they already selected the, the officer to do the...
It's, it's my understanding the, we're, we're gonna pay the school board directly, and then they will be in charge of getting the appropriate, um, licensed enforcement officer out there.
Okay.
They, they have...
They have already?
Yeah. They, they've been doing it since the beginning of the school year.
All right. So, so since the school year has already begun, why are we giving them twenty-five thousand? I mean, if there's seven months left in the school year, why, why, why are we not just giving them the, uh, supplement of seventeen thousand something?
Original agreement, Mr. Darby, started at the beginning of the school year.
Yeah, but that's their fault, that they didn't get the contract to us. That, that doesn't have anything to do with this, this body. They, they failed to establish, you know, timely contract. And, and we've been waiting, we've been right here. They just, for whatever reason, didn't, didn't produce the contract.
There were discussions between myself, the parish, um, the Sheriff's Department, um, all the entities involved, and a- again, uh, they have been performing this service since the beginning of the school year. So, um, with all the moving parts, it did take several months to draft it. This is, this is something that I drafted myself and got the approval of the school board.
You eventually did it yourself?
Yes, sir.
So, this is not even from their representative, you did it?
It, 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 I drafted it, and it has been approved by the school board's legal counsel.
Sounds talking about you, huh?
That's unbelievable.
Yeah, that's, that's unbelievable. I would, I, I mean, I'm, I'm subject to just give them that seventeen thousand versus the twenty-five thousand. I know it sound petty, but it's not petty, because it's a taxpayer of dollars, and, and that's what we're talking about. And I don't know how any other member of this council feel, but I, I, I think, uh, going forward, I'm, I'm glad it's just one school term.
Yes, sir. It's specific to the school year only. It's my understanding that we're looking at installing lights and other traffic control devices at the two affected intersections. So, the administration thought it would be prudent, um, that if it's not needed, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, moving forward, um, then of course, you know, we would not have to pay for that.
Okay, 'cause we already pay a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars for crossing guards, and that covers like nine schools, and we're talking about two schools for, for this, uh, twenty-five thousand. So, I'm just curious about that. Okay, all right, anyone else? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your vote, counsel.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance establishing a four-way stop at the intersection of Robert E. Lee Boulevard and General Pope Drive. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Hammond's, and a second, Mr. Maggio, on this item. End of discussion. And the floor is open for comments. Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of seven firefighter positions due to vacancies from resignation and retirement. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Free and a seconded, Mr. Maggio. Discussion. And the floor is open for comments. Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution for Public Works to fill a Laborer One position in the Streets and Drainage Division due to a promotion. First and final reading.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Smith and seconded... Motion made by Mrs. Smith and second, Mr. Montgomery. Discussion, counsel? And anyone would like to comment? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a utility worker in Lift Stations Division for Public Utilities Department, first and final reading.
So moved. Second.
Motion, Mrs. Smith, and second, Mr. Mc, uh, Mr. Williams. Discussion? Anybody would like to speak on this item? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution to contract with Nixon Engineering Solutions to provide Phase Two construction documents and right-of-way documents for the Tinsley Ditch Basin Relief Plan, first reading, first and final reading, sorry.
So moved. Second.
Clinton, can I ask you one question, please?
Just one?
Just one. This has no money attached to it.
No, we're going to utilize the line item budget inside the Engineering Department. We don't know really what it may cost yet, and so I thought it'd be good to get a good construction set of documents. And in his contract, he will have to provide an OPC at that time will come to the council and ask for construction dollars.
Thank you. Okay, we, we had a motion made by Mrs. Smith and a second by Mr. Maggio. Any other discussion? And anyone would like to comment? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of an assistant comptroller for payroll in advance of a retirement in the Finance Department to allow for sufficient training of a replacement, first and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Counsel, we, myself, Mr. Montgomery, we've been talking for several months, I think, with Angela about this, and so if you have any questions about it.
And the floor is open for comments. Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution adopting the City of Bossier City's current investment policy, first and final reading.
So moved. Second.
Motion, Mr. Williams, second, Mr. Montgomery. Do we need explanation from Ms. Williams? Is she here? I don't think she's here. There she is, I'm sorry.
Good afternoon. As required by the city charter, we review and adopt the investment policy each year, so we get an annual review to make sure everything's up to date.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Anyone would like to comment? Please cast your vote, counsel.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution to establish committee to examine the use of city recreational facilities, first and final reading.
So moved.
Second. Motion, Mr. Williams, second, Mr. Hammond's. Discussion, counsel?
Y'all done yet?
What'd you say?
Are you done yet?
Introduce an ordinance to.
Huh?
Now, with the committee. To a Bossier City Committee.
Any, any comments? The, the chair would like to thank both Councilmember Hammond's and Smith for your commitment to funding what we need for recreation in Bossier, and look forward to your, your update to the council and making it happen. Please cast your vote, counsel.
Motion carries. Approve parade permit fee waiver for Independence Bowl, Mardi Gras Parade, Preview Parade, December twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two.
So moved.
Second. Motion, Mr. Free, and second, Mr. Hammond's. Discussion?
Yeah, I would just like to say, I mean, it's very, very big for the City of Bossier that they've moved this back to completely down in Bossier and not going to Shreveport this year, so it's all going to stay in Bossier City.
That's great. Any comments? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Approve placement in the official minutes, the appointment of James Newman to the Bossier City Municipal Fire and Police Civil Service Board to fulfill the unexpired term of William Schwartz as a college-list board member in accordance with Civil Service Law Revised, Louisiana Revised Statute Title Thirty-three, Section Twenty-four, Seventy-one, two, appointment effective October twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two, and expires March sixth, twenty-twenty-three.
So moved. Second.
Motion, Mr. Free, second, Mrs. Smith. Anybody would like to comment? And the floor is open for comments.
Would y'all like to meet him? He's out, Jay's out there now, if y'all would like to meet him.
If he would like to introduce himself, that's fine.
Yes, I am James Newman. So, uh, any questions?
He's also known as the mayor of Stonebridge.
I'm known as a lot of things.
Well, we thank you for your volunteering to, to serve on this committee and this board, and appreciate your service in advance.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yes, sir. We have a motion and a second, please cast your vote, counsel.
Motion carries. Approve the twenty-twenty-three Bossier City Council meeting calendar.
So moved.
Got a, offer a change for the January meetings from, to the tenth and the twenty-fourth. I'll, I'll for that amendment.
Second.
Okay. Motion acknowledged by Mr. Montgomery and second, Mr. Free. So we're going to vote on that change? End of discussion? And the floor is open for comments. Please cast your vote, counsel.
You need a motion to approve as amended?
Yes, sir.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Any comments? Floor is again open for comments. Please cast your vote. There's no reports. Yes, sir.
I don't know everybody is aware, but just since we're on TV and an announcement to all the people of Bossier City and Bossier Parish, the council took an initiative years ago that we had to refurbish all the water tanks, and at the time, we decided that we would honor our first responders and our military, and we won People's Choice Tank of the Year. I believe that was two or three years ago. And most recently, we completed the third tower there, you know, at Airline at Ellis Pottery, and Mr. McSwain is out in the audience, and I'd like to give grateful thanks to his artistic mind in being able to take what we wanted, and we knew what we wanted, and actually make a picture of it that tells a tremendous story about our community and our support for our first responders and our military, home to Barksdale Air Force Base, Global Strike Command. So I'm honored to say that this year, we were actually selected by Tanemic, which is the coating manufacturer that all of the coatings that were used in preparing that tank there at Ellis Pottery at Airline, and it is a tremendous honor. It's out of fifty states, we were selected Tank of the Year by the company itself for the theme and, and the overall appearance. So anyway, hats off to everybody that contributed to that, especially Mr. Mike McSwain, so.
That's fantastic. And last but not least, give the mayor a chance to speak?
Yes, sir. I, I want to thank the council and the Finance Department for working together to get the checks for people, for the, the workers of, of the city that have worked real hard to get that little, that check at the end of the year, especially right at Christmas time. Also, I want to thank Ms. Carol and Terry and all of them, but they had Ray Lannas over at Civic Center for two, for two weeks, and they did a big, big, you know, sales and a lot of things over there. And today's the last day to vote. You can vote at the, uh, the library or courthouse in Benton. The Mayor's Prayer Breakfast will be Thursday, November tenth, at the Bossier Civic Center, and you can still be able to get tickets there. And David, it was over three hundred and fifty water tanks that we got picked out of, so that's, that's a good deal out there. Women's Volunteers of the Architects will be holding their annual Veterans Day program on Friday, November eleventh, at four o'clock at the Veterans Memorial right here. And today, we submitted four projects totaling forty-seven point four million dollars to the State for Capital Outlay. We are hopeful we can get some state funds to help make needed improvements here in Bossier City, so I appreciate all y'all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Y'all have a business meeting in San Jose.